I'd ask if everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. The first item is open forum. If anybody is here for an agenda item, for an item not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I will close open forum and move on to reports. Under the mayor's report tonight, we have three individuals that represent almost 100 years of service to this community who have retired. And I'd like to at this time recognize them and present them with plaques. And I'll do that as I walk out in front of the desk. And I'll start with the lowest amount of years, which is 27. And that's the Village of Westmont honors Jill Ann Peterson, if you'd like to come up. Administrative Assistant II, member of the village's Public Works Department, May '82 to July of '90. Building Department, October of '96 to September of 2015. In recognition of 27 years of dedicated service to the community, may retirement be enjoyable for you and filled with many happy years of pleasure. That's all. Thank you. I know what you said.
Okay.
Then we're going to ask, after I give all three, we'll take a picture and give you an opportunity, if you'd like, to say something. But I'm first going to give my second one. We do have a seven-second delay. The next individual who the Village of Westmont will honor is Robert Bath. And Bob, as we know him, Public Works Supervisor, Streets, Member of the village's Public Works Department, October of '81 to September of 2015. Recognition of 33 years of dedicated service to the community, may retirement be enjoyable for you and filled with many happy years of pleasure. Bob. And I like to say, I think he got his public start with the Park District.
I did.
He did, all right. All right, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
And the last award for retirement, the Village of Westmont will honor Lawrence Fossey, who has been a street maintenance worker II, a member of the village's Public Works Department from July of 1979 to September of 2015. In recognition of 36 years of dedicated service to the community, may retirement be enjoyable for you and filled with many happy years of pleasure. Eric. I'm hoping you left everybody a map of everything that's underground, from what I understand. Steve, you. All right, at this time, I welcome any of you or all of you. If you have any comments, it's up to you. If you have something you'd like to say, you can go to the podium and say it, Bob. All right, well, thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor was joking about the, well, joking, but a very accurate comment about the institutional knowledge that is leaving, you know, the room right now. They combined, they have 96 years of public service and, you know, of course, taking advantage of the early retirement incentive we put in roughly a year ago, which will be ending soon, and this is the tail end of that. So we're in a very, you know, it's, we're all happy for the opportunity that they have and everything, but that's very much going to be missed. And there's a lot of knowledge walking around.
There'll be a lot of institutional knowledge that is leaving us. And it's a pleasure to see them retiring. At same token, it's a little bit disappointing we're losing them, so. But again, congratulations, and we enjoy your retirement. All right, thank you. I have a couple more items. Monday night, I had coffee, chat with the chiefs and coffee with the mayor, sweet and savory. And we'd like to thank Danielle for hosting that for us. We had a very enjoyable evening. I would say 30, 35 individuals were there. A lot of good questions. I think that both chiefs gave good information. There will be a late lunch with the mayor at Harvest Grill on 63rd Street on Saturday, October the 17th, from 1:30 to 3:30. And I believe we'll be looking for reservations for that, and there'll be information be sent out where you just, because they provide an actual meal. And it's a great opportunity to sit down and see that restaurant, and also have a chance to discuss information with myself and some of the staff. And then at Westmont Restaurant, Victor, the owner, is having a coffee with the mayor during holidays on Small Business Saturday, November the 28th at 1:00 p.m. So there'll be additional information coming out about that. The State of the Village has got a different format this year. I know Larry, if you want to come up and talk about that, discuss that.
I'll be happy to. The change in format that we're talking about is traditionally, we've had an afternoon luncheon at one of our local restaurants where our presentation is made. This time, we're going to be using the amphitheater at the Hilton, which is a world-class facility, first and foremost. We're going to have a kind of a breakfast available at 7:30 a.m. check-in, and the program will start at 8:00 a.m. And it'll be about an hour in length. And we're actually expanding the scope of people that we're inviting to the event, so we're looking forward to a large audience and a great presentation. So that'll be, again, Wednesday, October 21st, at the Hilton at 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. The, I am, I think it was mentioned, there's going to be, I'm forming the anniversary committee. It's going to be comprised of 11 individuals. I will chair it. Gearing up for our 100th anniversary, which is six years from now, we'll have various people from the community, and I'll provide that list to everybody for the next meeting. And the goal is just to start preparing for the 100th and maybe do something for the 95th next year. So that is all I have, and I'd ask Clerk Simmsky if you have anything.
Well, I just want to remind everybody that we will be closed Monday for Labor Day, so don't come to the village, we won't be here. And on Saturday, September 12th, Larry, do you want to talk about the pet promenade at all? Because that is coming up. That's right.
I'll be happy to. This is going to be the 30th Annual Pet Promenade. It's going to be at Taiwana Park. We're starting at 10:00 a.m. and going to 2:00 p.m. We have 35 pet-related vendors that are going to be out there. We're going to have an actual parade of pets and their owners starting at noon. We have five judges led by Tammy Sousa from Fox TV, Weather Lady. And we're also going to have a new star this year. It's Bubba the Gator. That's going to be coming out and doing some demonstrations. And you can even, younger children even ride Bubba, if you're so inclined. So it's going to be a fun event, again, the 12th Saturday between 10:00 a.m. and the 2:00 p.m. at Taiwana.
Thanks. And I just want to wish everybody to have a wonderful Labor Day. You know, it's our summer last bling almost, so get out there and enjoy it. Thank you.
Attorney Zemanek.
Just a report. We did successfully close on the purchase of 412, 414, and 416 Warwick Avenue over the past two weeks. And those properties will be, at least temporarily, land banked, but to be used for stormwater management purposes in the future.
Thank you. Manager May.
Mayor, I wanted to, as a reminder, we did confirm and schedule the two joint meetings that we were going to have. The first one is the joint meeting with the Park District Board of Commissioners. That meeting will be next Wednesday, September 9th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Park District Facility. And I believe that's a full meeting night for the Park District, so the first portion will be the joint meeting with the village. And then immediately next day, on Thursday, the 10th, we'll have a joint meeting with the Westmont Special Events Corp. And that will be done in Westmont Center in the lower level. Both of these are public meetings, but I was just confirming the attendance and that those have been arranged, and those agendas will be published tomorrow. And that was it.
Good. Move on to trustees, and I look, Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First, I'd like to recap. We had a Public Safety Committee meeting before this meeting, and we talked a lot, a lot. So let me just start from the top down. We'll start with fire first. First thing we went over was home health care delivery system. This is something we've talked about in the past. Currently, this is on hold until we learn some more from how other towns are kind of going about it and kind of getting things done. So that's still pending. The next kind of neat thing we talked about was leasing of our oxygen tanks. This is something, we're going to transition from owning them to leasing them. Potential annual savings of about $2,350 per year, plus a one-time credit of $700 upfront if we decide to switch over to this method. This will come to the village board next. Let's see. We also talked about a new tent ordinance. Let me switch over here. Larry's working on a tent ordinance for us for the future installation setting up of tents for one day and multiple days of tenant use. This is going to come to the village board towards the end of the year for us to finalize. Next, we talked about a five-year strategic plan. This was presented to us by Deputy Chief, and we reviewed this and everything that entailed of it. This will in turn come to the village board for final approval next. And then last, I just have some updates for the fire department. First, September 11th, coming up next week, we will have a 9/11 service at Station 2, starting at 2:00 p.m. on September 11th. On September 19th, Saturday, we have a Senior Car Clinic Day at Headquarters Station from 8:00 a.m. to noon. On Saturday, September 19th, is also the Burn Camp fundraiser at Thai Park from noon to 4:00 p.m. And then getting into October, which I'll keep updating at the next meeting as well, but October 3rd, we have, at Saturday, October 3rd, at Headquarters Station from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., we have the Fire Department Open House. And then lastly, October 9th, we have the Silent Parade, which is Friday, starting at 7:00 p.m. in Hinsdale, coming down Chicago Avenue, going west into Downers Grove. We did also talk about an open burning ordinance, and Larry is going to bring that to the village board for our next meeting, for us to adopt that as well. I believe that was it from fire. Let me make sure. Yeah, that's it from fire. And going into police, police, first thing we talked about was unpaid parking tickets. We're going to be doing an amnesty program starting next year. It's going to come to the village board for adoption. This will be, this will go on every, the beginning of each year, for tickets that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, for tickets that haven't been paid within the previous 12 months. So I think that's the right way that's going to work. It's kind of a neat program to hopefully get some of these folks to pay up and stop hurting their credit. We also discussed video gaming. This is going to come to village board. It was recommended from the committee to come to village board for adoption. We did all agree that we want to protect the existing businesses and give them time to sign up, if they are going to sign up, for video gaming. But also, it's going to put on a restriction for new incoming businesses to kind of control the influx of the gaming types of businesses that we have been getting. And then lastly, Trustee Barry isn't here today, but he raised the point on Chicago Avenue and Washington Street, traffic control. We didn't talk about it in depth too much, but we are going to put up some cross-traffic-doesn't-stop signage, just in the meantime, just to make sure that folks kind of get an idea of what's going on. And hopefully, that'll improve it, but we will bring that back to the next Public Safety meeting to continue discussing it, if it's still an issue. And then lastly, something I found out that the city of Elmhurst does are public roll calls. And I talked with the chief and deputy chief about it, and they're going to do a public roll call starting in a few weeks at the library, which would be kind of a neat way for police officers, especially in these times, to really get out and meet with the folks and kind of grow some relationships with the residents. So I'm kind of excited about that. And that's it for public safety. Schools in session, be safe, drive safe, and please obey the speed limit around the schools and pedestrian crosswalks. One last thing, I promise, or two last things. 35th Street, it really isn't in Westmont, but it kind of affects Westmont. Village of Oakbrook, along with the Forest Preserve, from 31st Street, wraps around Front Edged Road and 83, I think is St. Pascal Drive. They're going to be resurfacing it and widening it, and the Forest Preserve is adding actually a bike lane that's going to go all the way around from the dog park, connect to the existing one on 35th Street. So it's kind of a neat project. Again, that's going on right now, if you haven't seen it. And lastly, I'd like to call up our Public Works Director, Mike Ramsey, to talk about a pretty cool international award that we received this past week. That was a lot.
Good evening. Yeah, this past week, I found out something I, we had did a submission last year, about this time last year, we submitted an idea, an invention, that myself, Jim Cates, and Virgil Vescusso came up with. Actually, I thought about it about 20 years ago, before technology was there. What it is basically is a valve key that you could use to light up. And what it is, is before, in the old days, you had to take the lid off and hold the valve key and try to hold a flashlight to try to see the nut on the vault, or on the valve in the vault, or in the box. And unfortunately, a lot of times, it's middle of winter, you dropped a flashlight, you couldn't, you know, it was just, it was just very difficult to key any kind of valves or anything that way. So I wanted to come up with an idea to make a lighted valve key, but back then, there was just no way of doing it. So 20 years later, fast forward, I was talking to Jim one day, and he actually thought it was a pretty good idea. So between me and Jim, we came up with a design to come up with a key that you could use LED lights and a 9-volt battery. So we presented it to Virgil, because Virgil's very handy with welding, and so we took a valve key over there. He was able to run the wire through the valve key and put LED lights through all, you know, at the top and at the bottom of the valve key. And we tried it out at our first main break one night, and it was amazing. It just lit up the valve box. We were able to find the valve, the nut on the valve right away, saved us, you know, 20, 25 minutes. Usually, it messes around trying to find the nut, saved us so much time. So I said, you know, we should submit this as a gimmicks and gadgets thing for AWWA, which is an international organization that monitors, you know, monitors water throughout the entire world. And there's hundreds of applications usually every year for this award. And not thinking that we'd even have a chance to win, we ended up winning first place. So it was pretty exciting. So next month, we'll be on the cover of Oplow, which is a magazine that gets sent all over the world. And we get to go to Maryland, which is a conference, Water Infrastructure Conference in Bethesda, Maryland, in October, to receive the plaque and a check for $800. We're planning on using that check for $800 to pay for our expenses to go there, because, you know, obviously, it's not right for us to keep the money. But, yeah, so we're going to use that for the conference. The conference is paid for. They're going to pay for us to go to the conference. So it's going to be a great experience for the three of us. Like I said, there'll be people all over the world at this conference, so it'll be a neat experience for everybody. But it was, you know, it was just something that we came up with. We didn't think much of it at the time, and now it's kind of taken off, so.
So you mentioned AWWA, that's the American Waterworks Association, and the Oplow is their periodical that's published there. And it's an international organization and worldwide distribution of, you know, this information, the accomplishment, and that magazine. And who's the only person in the world who's appeared on the cover twice?
We don't need to bring that up. It'll be me.
Uh-oh.
But it is kind of fun. But, yeah, it's a fun thing, and we are the second people ever in the 50 years at this gimmicks and gadgets contest from Illinois to win. So there was one person from up north, I think it was Lake and the Hills. I think it was back in like 2001. He invented something and he won, so we're the second ones from Illinois to win.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. The only good thing about that is that the village owns a patent because it did it on its own. Village time, so. Trustee Guzal.
Just a few items. First, I'd like to ask if we can have autographed copies of the Oplow magazine when you get back?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And congratulations again. Our next Finance Committee meeting will be October 1st at 4:00. So hopefully, everybody can make it. And I would also like to wish everybody a happy and safe Labor Day weekend. I know it's supposed to be summer temperatures, so please enjoy it, because who knows what the next couple of months are going to hold. And that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Eddie.
Yes. Couple of things. First one is that on September 16th, it's a Wednesday, Good Samaritan Hospital is having what they call a senior health fair. And it's going to be at their wellness center over by the hospital. And anybody who wants to go, the Lions Club will have the hearing bus and the diabetic and apathy bus there, but it's a full, it's all free, and a nice way for seniors to come and have things checked out. The Legislative Committee met last week in August, and I have given all of you a recap of things that were presented there. There is a, there was a pension reform white paper that I copied a draft of, so you all can see it. That's going to be presented to the full conference for their approval and would then become a policy statement on pension reform. The bottom line is that there's all kinds of things going on. The big thing is, there's no budget yet, as far as I know. That could have changed today. It's very fluid. But the governor and the Republicans are saying that they're not going to approve a budget unless there's some reform included in the way money gets spent. The Democrats are saying, approve the budget, then we'll talk about reform. So it's a complete impasse. And I think we all know now that other people are being affected by this, because the Controller's Office has said they don't have the right, without a budget, to issue checks. And so now people who have won the lottery aren't getting their money. People who have income from gambling, the video machines, aren't getting their money. It's all just being held. The problem is, the state's collecting all of this money, so they got it. It's just they're not distributing it. But again, you can read this over when you get a chance at your own leisure. It's interesting, and, so it's enjoyable reading whenever you want to take a chance to do it. The other thing that I have is that Economic Development Committee did meet yesterday morning. We had one very nice presentation from some folks who would like to come in, and as new owners of the Pompey Restaurant, extremely positive people. We said, you think you're going to do all right? And they said, oh, no. We're going to do great. I mean, you talk about positive people, a positive attitude about what they want to do and how they want to do it. It was just very, very impressive. And they hope to be open in another, they're talking a month. I don't know if the Health Department will pass judgment that fast, but they want to get open pretty quickly and get that restarted. But a lot of positive things. Again, economic development here is moving forward, thanks to Larry, thanks to Jill, and the things that they're doing with the folks who come in. The other thing is, also on the night of the 16th, Larry, do you want to talk about the open house and what we're doing with the stuff-a-truck?
Be happy to. Trustee Angton. On September 16th is our semi-annual open house, and this will be the second consecutive year that we're partnering with the People's Resource Center to have a community-wide food drive. So typically, our open house is held over at Westmont Center. This year, we're going to be holding it over at the People's Resource Center on Chestnut. It's going to be between 5:00 and 7:00. And again, that'll be the official kickoff of our community-wide food drive, which will conclude on October 24th, which is Make a Difference Day in the United States as part of the Trick or Treat Trail. So thank you.
And anyone who would like to participate can sign up and pick up the containers and fill them, and then just bring them, they bring them back to the People's Resource Center, right, Larry? Yeah. So, you know, our goal is to, is to, is to collect, what is it, how many pounds of, 40,000 pounds of food? I think everyone knows, People's Resource Center is an unbelievable place and does a great job. So please participate with that. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have two items. I'll be really brief. The first one is, our next Administrative Committee meeting is October the 1st at 4:30 right here in this room. So please come out and join us. It's an open meeting. Next item is September the 10th. As Manager May mentioned, there is a joint meeting between the staff here and, sorry, with the board here and the Westmont Special Events. It's going to be at 6:00 in Westmont Center, and we're going to review the survey that everybody was encouraged to answer and respond to. So we'll be taking a look at everybody's opinion about the street fair and the taste of Westmont, whether they should continue, where they currently are, whether they have ideas that should be moved. So we'll be reviewing a lot of information about special events activities. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. Does any board members would like any of the items to be removed?
I have none.
Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Mayor, tonight, on the consent agenda, the first item is Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held August 20, 2015. Next is Finance Ordinance Number 9, in the amount of $1,435,175.36. Next is Purchase Orders. First purchase order is Catania for $5,740. This is for repair work, for, or replace the generator transfer switch, whereas it's budgeted, it's marked as other, it's not specifically budgeted to repair that item, but it's part of the general facilities maintenance budget. So in that respect, it is budgeted. Next purchase order is Wilspur Kelsey, $12,900. The, with respect to the Eagle Creek, St. Joseph's Creek, three-year monitoring reporting, this is an open purchase order for the agreement that you passed last meeting. And next purchase order, and final purchase order is Westmont Chamber of Commerce, $16,376 for the Economic Development Partnership. That brings the total of the purchase orders to $35,016. And therefore, the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number 9 is $1,470,191.36. Continuing with the consent agenda, we have a proclamation for 2015 National Payroll Week. Board to consider a proclamation to declare September 7th through the 11th of 2015 as National Payroll Week in Westmont. The last item is Community Events, being the 2015 Trick or Treat Trail. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests for the Westmont Chamber of Commerce Trick or Treat Trail and the People's Resource Center Stuff-a-Truck Event. Number one being partial closure of the commuter parking lot at Cass and Burlington, and the second being an amplified sound permit. And if I could, Larry, if you would come up and speak a little bit about the Trick or Treat Trail event itself, and the activities to be.
Thank you, Manager May. The Trick or Treat Trail has been a longstanding, very successful event in our downtown business community. We typically draw anywhere from about 600 to 800 guests for that event. It's scheduled for the 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And so that's pretty much the way we've done it for years. However, we have two new components we're adding to the mix this year. And if Larry McIntyre, if you can come up and talk about one of them. The first one is going to be the pumpkin smashing component, and Larry's been working very hard on this, so I'll let him speak to that specifically.
Thank you very much. This is still a new event that's in evolution stage, but this was initially discussed at our Environmental Improvement Commission. We're working with the farm down on 63rd Street to promote pumpkin composting. And so the idea was, you know, what can we do to, you know, let people know about this opportunity and try to make it exciting? And we had heard about some community doing a pumpkin catapult. And we looked at that and thought that was very interesting, and of course, possible bring out media attention, but catapults, we didn't think we were going to be able to figure that one out. So we came up with a Plan B, which was to use a public works cherry picker. And so the idea, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did a community challenge in which we invited community organizations to compete against each other for the luge event. And so we're looking to do a similar thing with this, where community organizations would put forth one representative and go about 20 feet, 25 feet up in the cherry picker with two pumpkins. And Mike has offered, Mike Ramsey has offered to help me create a target over there in the parking lot at Cass and Burlington.
With a hard hat, I hope.
With a hard hat, right? And from that distance, you know, you lob it out and you try to hit the target, and just have some fun with that type of a contest. And so that will, it'll do several things. One, we just think the intrigue of this event will draw a lot of people, both, and then visually, I feel confident that we have a good chance of getting local media out there to cover it. But with that, we would promote.
But with that, we would promote not only the composting, but also the Trick or Treat Trail, Halloween safety, and then, of course, the stuff-a-truck event that's all tied together. So we think it'll be a good opportunity to promote all these things collectively.
Cool.
And then the final component that's being added that's new this year is we're partnering with the Westmont Historical Society, and we're going to be doing a scarecrow competition, decorating competition. We're going to have two categories. We're going to have a business and organizational category, and we're in the second category will be families and individuals. Again, we'll be partnering with the Historical Society. They have these kits that you can buy for only $10 to make your scarecrow, and then we'll be positioning throughout downtown starting the week of October 12th, and they'll remain up until just after Halloween. And we'll have a judging of people's choice for both those categories. So the idea is to kind of dress up the, and give a different feel to the season for downtown Westmont and have some fun doing it, so. Couple of new changes, a couple of new twists, all very fun, all very, I think, engaging for our entire community. Any specific questions I can answer about any or all those?
Sounds like fun.
And that evening, there's another, in October, not all the.
We also have that evening on the 24th, we have the Haunted Trail.
Yes.
Down by Twin Lakes Woods, which is always a very popular event. I mean, probably hundreds of people come out to that event. Several, at least, probably over 1,000, actually. So that event that day, so that whole day of October 24th is going to be packed with activities from early morning into the evening.
Thank you. Thank you. You both. Mayor, that concludes the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
So moved, Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made, and second, any questions? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Niro.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Unfinished business, there, we do not have any. We'll move on to new business, and I'm going to just, I understand we have someone who's got to run to a medical facility to pick up a relative, so we're going to move B ahead of A, and that's 106 South Cass Avenue Downtown Development Grant Request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a Downtown Development Grant Request in the amount of $1,662.50 from Angelina Duran in the B1 Limited Business District and Community Development Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting a 50% matching grant for a $3,300 fire alarm system which she has been working with, with the Fire Department. We still have a remaining Life Safety Fund balance of $10,337, and staff recommends approval. Mrs. Duran is available if there's any questions about the grant.
Do we have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero. Motion made, and second, on the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Okay, it was approved. So we'll move back to A on the new business. 408 to 414 North Cass, request for extension of approvals. Board to consider an ordinance extending the variance approval request for Westmont Gardens Town Homes in the R4 General Residence District. Again, Community Development. Ziegler, give us some additional information.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The applicant is looking for an extension until April of next year. He expects to have his approvals earlier than that, but he wouldn't be starting the construction actually until April. The approvals were granted last June for the new townhomes, and there's particular stormwater concerns at the site. If you'll remember, the County Health Department flooded pretty badly, and so they've been working along that side property line. There's a lot of special considerations in that area. So we recommend approval so that the builder can resolve these onsite engineering issues and continue moving forward toward construction. And Steve Vernon is here, if there's any questions.
Do we have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Addington.
Motion made, and second, approve. On the question. Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business, C Engineering Agreement, Naperville Road and Warwick Avenue Stormwater Management Project. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Engineering Solutions Team for Design. Phase One Engineering Services for the Naperville Road and Warwick Avenue Stormwater Management Project. Public Works Director Ramsey.
Yes, we are requesting that to approve the sum of $38,870 for a Phase One Design Engineering Services for the village, the village's Naperville Road and Warwick Avenue Stormwater Management. The village concept is to work incrementally to reduce the stormwater load which passes through sensitive areas on Warwick Avenue. If you know what we're talking about, it's a triangle area by Matthias Gold, that whole area, you know, that corner there.
Northeast Acres entrance.
Basically, that's correct. And we anticipate by reducing the contributory areas that this current stormwater relief system will be, will then be able to better handle the lessening required demand. The specific area is examined by Engineering Solutions Team, and they feel like the design that they're proposing will help eventually, you know, relieve some of that problems that we're having there.
You'll also recall this as one of the, well, part of the whole village-wide stormwater project, and with the stormwater tax implemented, we were going to spend this year doing engineering design so that we have some constructible projects in the next budget year, you know, as soon as spring, and this is one of the opportunities for a quick start project and that whole corner. Although the, you know, the issue on there is related to what goes on in the 400 Block Two, there are other opportunities where maybe that could be, you know, interconnected, and that's what we want to investigate.
So does this come out of the stormwater utility?
Yeah.
It does? Okay, cool.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second by Little.
Motion made, and second, any questions? Anybody seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. And Mike will stay right there for Agenda Item D, Engineering Agreement, Norfolk and Linden Detention Facility Project. The Board to consider an ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Strand and Associates for Design Phase One and Two Engineering Services for the Norfolk and Linden Detention Facility Project. Public Works Director Ramsey.
Thank you. We're requesting to approve the sum of $69,630 for Phase One and Phase Two Design Engineering Services for the village's Norfolk and Linden Detention Facility Project. Basically, what this is, is the area across Manning School where the current playground is. It's an opportunity for us to work with the school district, and it's an opportunity to improve the stormwater issues that we have in that depressed area there. It'll give us a good, a good chance to handle a lot of the stormwater issues there, and also, it'll give them a chance to upgrade their current playground area. If you've driven by there, they're, they're pretty excited about us doing this, working with them.
They have their own master plan for improvements they want to do there, so this is kind of a cooperative thing, but also under the same category of our Quick Start Stormwater Management.
And if you, if you go back to when we were holding those meetings, there were residents right up and down Linden.
Oh, yeah.
That, that came and talked about some of the flooding issues. So this is another area that there is concerns with.
Would any money be generated from the school, or is it just all stormwater?
They're, it's their property, so we're, it's, we're, it's kind of access to the parcel to do the improvements, and then the other, it, we're, the design is so that it doesn't conflict with anything they're doing. If they want to implement any of their improvements at the same time and in the contract, then it would be done cooperatively, financially as well. Otherwise, we're just making sure we're not designing something that would, you know, spite what they were doing.
Or takes away from what they're already doing.
Yeah.
Right, and we'll make sure, when we do go to construction, if they get to that point, we'll make sure it's obviously not when school's in session. We'll, we'll work around.
And this is going to be similar to other projects we'll have with other municipal bodies in the community.
Correct. We'll talk about that Wednesday.
Mike, for both these projects, are we utilizing green infrastructure, or are we just telling the engineers to look at conventional ways?
Both. I mean, we've asked them to look at both, but, you know, and this depends from case by case, which situations, any chance we can use green infrastructure, we will, but in some cases, it's just not feasible.
All right.
But we have, we have talked to both the engineering companies about that.
I know I say this every time, and Steve, I think, I think you yell at me every time, but could we do like a, just a little press release to tell people that we're, this is what we're starting to do? I mean, this is cool stuff, and people have been waiting a long time for this.
Let's see if you approve it first.
All right. Well, I think it'll be approved, but I just think it's exciting, and I'd love to get the word out here.
Well, we'll have a motion to see if it gets approved. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second.
Second by Little.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I have a question for the attorney. If I vote no, does it make him vote?
Yep. Thought about that one, aren't you?
That's only happened. That's right. Any other questions that are reasonable?
Reasonable.
If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
I wouldn't do that to you.
Motion passes. New business, E Declaration of Village Property as Surplus. Board to consider an ordinance declaring certain village-owned vehicles as surplus property to be sold at the DePage Mayor's and Managers Conference Auction. Public Works Director Ramsey.
Got a new color?
Thank you. You can see with the attachment we, I think you have in your packet, you'll see the pictures of the vehicles. And I also handed out to everyone tonight, actual description of every vehicle and the one piece of equipment that we're going to be giving, selling at auction. The five vehicles and one water pump will be disposed of by auction through Oppenhoff Auction Services on behalf of DePage Mayor's and Managers. One will be used for the Fire Department's training. This property will be declared a surplus and sold, and will be removed from the village's property inventory. So you can see in the pictures here, there's one water pump, and the rest are vehicles. Just a little background on the water pump. That water pump is 40 years old, and it still works like, it's, it's really, we're going to get a lot of money just for the water pump. It's, I'm actually sad to see it go, but we did replace it a few years ago because it used regular gas, and it's not very efficient. We did replace it with a new diesel pump that works fantastic. This pump was actually used down in the city of Chicago when they had the Great Flood in 1994. Is that right? The Fire Department.
Sweet.
Took it down there, and they used it to pump out some of the building. So a little sad about seeing it go, but, you know, time has come for the, for us to get rid of it.
And again, by law, we need to declare this surplus in order to sell it.
Correct.
And we will set a minimum, which is usually a fair value, and then a lot of times, we get considerably more.
Right. Virgil's been very successful with this, and I know Spencer's been involved in the past with eBay and stuff like that, too, and I know Spencer knows better than I do, but we've done pretty well in these auctions.
Good. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made, second, to approve the surplus property for auction. Any additional questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Moving on the agenda, miscellaneous. Is there anybody who have?
Harold's not here, so we.
I don't know.
Just skip right over it.
I don't know if there's any, we knew this agenda was light tonight, so I didn't know if anybody had anything to add. Spencer, you hadn't said anything all night?
[laughing]
Well, then, if we do not have an executive session, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Little.
Second, Addington.
Motion made, and second, to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
And again, we'll adjourn the meeting at 6:47. Thank you.